Is Mr. Adam Lee Ritter from St. Patrick's Hospital here? Would you come forward? And your parents, are they here with you? Oh, I knew there was a... Who is the actor John Ritter? So, Mr. Ritter is the 2021 recipient of the Mississippi Association of County Supervisors for the County Employee Scholarship, awarded this day by the MAS Harrison County Board of Supervisors, the 7th of May, 2021. And along with that is a $500 scholarship. So, I'll come around, maybe we can take some pictures, Mr. Kim. Y'all join me? Congratulations. Where you gonna be?
Oh, I'm in there.
Oh, we love engineers, Mrs. Say. I wish I gave him twice that money. Engineer, bulldog.
Thank you.
Thank you all. See you later. We sit stage, y'all. Here's Mr. Wayne O'Neal, present to discuss Pelican Waste to Briefing Cup. Our favorite subject.
Thank you for having me. Wayne O'Neal, 11070 Delaware, Gulfport, Mississippi. Thank you for having me. I'll...I have three minutes, so I'll be brief. But I do want to tell y'all, you're the local government and you're a direct voice. You're a tougher voice that you have to listen to everything than the state or the federal. I've walked in your shoes. I was in office for 12 years in the city of Long Beach. I wish Ms. Connie was here because in 1983 Connie was in the beautification group and she came to Long Beach asking for money to keep the beautification project going. It's tough going behind Adam, going to Mississippi State. Congratulations, we have some great kids on this coast. It's tough going behind y'all. But at least I don't have to go behind Mayor Blessing. Him and I served at the same time back in the day where we didn't have any casinos, we didn't have any money. But we made it through it. Pelican Waste issue that I called in and talked to Selena and Mr. Latner, several phone calls. It was an isolated issue that we were having trouble picking up my trash. They wanted to identify it between hurricane damage, I had a new home going on the property, it was a vacant lot, semi-vacant lot, I had the building going, blah, blah, blah. One thing, week after weekend, I think y'all have had the meeting and I think you have that resolved. Thank you for your efforts and we'll keep it going. The main reason I want to talk to you about is I don't have any petitions, I don't have pictures, but you can read it every day in the newspaper, in the Sun Herald, about litter and trash all over this coast. And I know you've heard this at least every year. I have a...Mr. Latner was my economics teacher back in high school, so he taught me a little bit about money when I was in Long Beach. I'll take a little credit for cleaning up the biggest dump that we had, that was Ronald Jefferson's dump. And we had no money, you remember? We had no money. We fought it and fought it. And if you ride by there today, it's clean. We have Sand Beach Authority, takes money. We have the Water Sewer Department, Authority. We have all kinds of authority. I'm not here to criticize you, but what we have working, and I know you have some programs, Mr. Peterson, Sheriff Peterson, I know that he's trying to get the prisoners and the... It ain't working because Mr. Latner and I talk all the time and say, Wayne, you know, as soon as these guys go down and pick up, clean up land and road, the next day, it's littered. So, my suggestion and my idea is you get to people, you get to their pocketbooks. I don't know how many tickets have been written for litter. I see people littering all the time, but I'm not going to say anything to them because you know what could happen. I think that's one of the issues that needs to be addressed is give these people tickets and prosecute them and give them some fines. The other thing that I would like to see implemented is the Sand Beach Authority takes care of the coast, that's our bread and butter, that's our money, the coast, they do an excellent job. We've got to have something north of I-10 to pick up the trash and it just takes that one thing: money. I know you'll be committed, I'd like to say, please, I haven't seen your budget in years, but if you're committed and you really want to do it, because my favorite saying, and I talk to people all over, I draw house plans, I build, and people are calling, and people that do come down here, they say, Wayne, you know, it's just a little trashy, but we love the coast and we love the beach. The beach is fun. We've got to have some money because my favorite saying that I call this coast is we are the coast with the most. And we really are. The first meeting that we had with the grant, you were there, they said, "The Mississippi Gulf Coast is the biggest hidden jewel in this country." And we are, we still are, because people are moving down here and I draw plans for people and build homes for people that have come to cruising the coast and everything and they just say, Wayne, we love it, we're going to stay. Of course, I've been here 66 years and it's great, but we've got to clean it up. So, please consider in your next budget, and I'll attend some of the budget meetings and, you know, if you want to, because I would love to help, try to find some money to put in a trash authority, I don't know what you want to call it, just cleanup authority. We've got to have some. Thank you again for allowing me to speak and appreciate you being at the top of the agenda because I've been here a while and I said, if I have to wait, thank you so much.
Mr. O'Neal, can I just say something? I personally have gotten five phone calls just on my cellphone, so it's not an isolated event with Pelican not picking up.
Okay.
And then I appreciate your advice about litter and your advice about the beach, that's all fine and dandy, but we really need your commitment today that you will pick up trash, what you are paid to do by this county, that's all we want to hear.
Absolutely, yeah. And I know it was an isolated...
Because I thought it was done, but then I got another call last night, but it's still, this lady, and I have to find her address, it was actually from Rocko. It's not being done, so that's what we need to hyper-focus on.
Oh, yeah.
Picking up trash, what we are paying you to do.
A lot of the trash is coming out of their trucks. I see them all the time, I ride down the road and I see them and...
But we're talking about trash in front of people's homes that they're putting out and it's not being picked up, that's what we're talking about.
It was isolated, but I know y'all had other issues.
You're not with Pelican Waste?
No, just here to talk about.
Oh! When it says Wayne O'Neal with Pelican Waste, all right, well then, I agree with you, go on, sorry.
Oh, no, no, it's not a...
Okay, where's Pelican Waste? Let's get them.
It's not an isolated case, mine was an isolated case.
Gotcha, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. I stand behind you about doing something, but like I say, Mr. Latner and Selena, I give credit to Selena.
So, you're one of the citizens complaining about Pelican Waste? Okay, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. And Sheriff Peterson has done an excellent job with the prisoners, as much as he can do.
Right.
We are in the process of hiring a new beautification commission director. So, when we get that person on board, hopefully we can...
Thank you so much. And Sheriff, thank you so much for everything that y'all did. And instead of defunding, y'all need a raise. And I think everybody was appreciative of that.
Amen, I agree with that.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Wayne, sorry about that.
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah, it looks like he's with Pelican Waste.
Okay, is Mr. Harold Porter here to discuss auto damage claiming amount of $193.72? Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Harold Porter, I dress 2252 Beach Drive, condo 1003 Gulfport.
Okay, what happened?
It was April 18th on the B Street on the north side, while I was going down, it was raining, it had been raining a few days. Well, I hit a hole that didn't have no barricades, no cones, nothing on it, it was full of water and I couldn't tell it was a hole. And I ruined one tire and threw my car out of line.
Carolyn, are you the one that...
Yes, ma'am.
Did the report, can you tell us?
This is the city of Gulfport, Harrison County.
It's Gulfport, Gulfport split where we're getting it prepped for land shapers to come in and pave. And we had a bunch of the cutouts done and we had everything packed down and went out and checked it. Well, that weekend, we had a lot of weather that came through and it caused this one little area to wash out and it actually hit it. We had our loose gravel signs and everything up, but with all the rain, we had to wash out and didn't realize. Whenever I came in on Monday and we seen it, the guys started force packing it down and we were getting asphalt out there to try and prevent the washout. Instead of using just the loose gravel, we started putting asphalt in it to prevent it from washing out. But we had loose gravel signs and everything up, the rain had washed it out.
Are the road construction signs up also?
Yes, sir.
Would this not be a city?
It's a project, if you remember, the county, the Gulfport...
It's a joint.
Gulfport, well, actually not joint, Gulfport, Gulfport and the county agreed to do it with Gulfport, Gulfport helping people. The county's actually doing the project, as I understand it.
So, what's the board's pleasure?
The problem with these kind of claims is you have to be on notice of the condition. And, you know, there's no evidence of any prior notice, the board, I mean, the county employees packed it. Unfortunately, weather came through, car drive over it, every time a car drives over one of these, it splashes out, causes a problem. So, you have to find the board, the county was negligent in some manner. Generally, on a pothole claim, because this happens all the time because of what undermines the roadways, you have to show that the county was on prior notice that the pothole was there and that they didn't do something, failed to do something to remedy it. Here, you have it on Thursday and it just happens. And it's a road construction site, it's not something that you wouldn't expect as a driver when you drive down the road in an area that is road construction, slow down. It's up to the board to decide whether the county was negligent in some manner, authorized the claim.
Does the board have a motion or a direction, please?
If they would have cones up, you know, warning, that there were thin holes cut, you know? I mean, I would have bought it, but there was no cones, nothing.
They had signs, you didn't see road construction signs?
I didn't see a sign.
There were road construction signs.
There were signs out stating that there was loose gravel throughout, we had our cones and stuff over to the sides, and then we had our sign out stating that it was Harrison County Board of Supervisors project that was also out.
I was on that road yesterday, there wasn't a road construction sign.
We don't have any now, we've actually put the asphalt down and the parts that we cut now, it's there and it's waiting on land shapers to come in and mill everything up and pave it. I'm still going out there at least every other day to check it, to make sure with weather we haven't had any washouts on the sides where we've prepped it for widening. But I'm still making sure I go out and check it and the guys are going out there and checking it and follow that.
Do we have road construction signs at all or just loose gravel signs?
At the time that this had occurred, we only had the loose gravel signs and then the signs stated that it was a Harrison County project that was taking place on that road with the board's names on it, were what we had out.
That wasn't loose gravel, it had to be packed in dirt if it was packed.
It was a limestone, I'm sorry.
Rainy and water was in it.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. It had limestone put in it where they run the roller to try and hold it down, but we had, it was a big rainstorm, we had a lot of rain that came through that weekend. And at that time also, they had the big drainage issue that we actually corrected for the cities. And I guess with the rain, people driving through it and everything, it loosened up what they had packed down.
Is that a road that you normally travel?
Yeah.
So, have you been noticed any construction at all?
Not at that time.
I mean, just in general?
Well, no, I've noticed now, well, I was on it yesterday, you know, seeing where they done work, they got tip...
Prior to your incident, did you notice any kind of road construction going on? Have you traveled on a frequent basis?
I can't remember. I'm not going to say it was or was not, but I can't remember, you know, at that time.
You can't remember there was construction going on?
Well, I know it was after that, I know that...
Prior?
Yeah, but prior, I can't say that I noticed or not, I mean, I can't say either way. But I did, after that, after I ruined my tire, yeah, I...
The board, I didn't mean interrupting. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, sir, that's okay.
It's going to have to make up its mind if we're going to rewrite all these actions, especially due to weather or, as Tim indicated, we can't foresee all those, if we're not notified or make up our mind, what we're going to do. The issue is whether we were notified and whether there were the signs out, it sounds like we were not notified and the signs were out.
Right, we were not notified until one day.
What complicated was the inclement weather.
I've got a picture of it, we took pictures that morning.
Now, we believe that.
And that one had a piece pipe in it.
Yeah, we're not questioning it.
We're trying to figure out, I think we've had a couple of other claims that we denied, so I need some direction.
Yeah, I'll have a motion to deny the claim.
So, we have a motion to deny, do we have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Number four, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing approving lease agreement with J. Boyes, aim for approximately one acre of land within a Bernard by the industrial park. Oh, I'm sorry.
Tell him what happened.
So, the board voted to deny your claim. We've had other claims and because this was kind of an act of nature, it was filled when the guys left going home for work and then the rain filled it up.
Well, I couldn't say it was filled, I mean, honestly, all I know is it wasn't filled when I come through and ruined my tire. It wasn't filled.
Tim had...
Yes, sir.
Board, the way the law is written, the board cannot pay a claim unless they find certain facts, right? As if the county was somehow negligent, you know, pothole cases, there's plenty of them, you have to show that the county had something prior notice, that it was in the condition when you hit it. In this case, the evidence shows that the hole was packed, limestone. What happened was you're in a city rainstorm and cars, water causes that to wash out and that's what created the hole, the county had not been advised that it had occurred.
I wouldn't count that as a pothole, that was cut out.
That's right.
I mean, a pothole, something wore down, but that was cut out.
That's a comparison, it's not actually, you're right, it's something that was solid until the rain hit and cars drive across it and it created a hole. It wasn't a hole when it was on Thursday before there was weather. If there hadn't been any weather, there wouldn't have been a hole. So, it's a weather...
Well, I would say, no, it wouldn't have been a hole if it wasn't cut out to do repair.
I understand.
A pothole to me is one that's worn out. Okay, so that's y'all, y'all deny.
Yes, sir. And before we get to number four, Mr. Gulfport is here for items 86 and 87 on the agenda. Do we have a motion to move items 86 and 87?
No.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 86, Mr. Blessing. That would be Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Harrison County, accepting from Columbus Communities LLC an easement dedicating the right of way for Veterans Boulevard at Tradition and for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 87, resolution approving application for $2 million grant from the Mississippi Development Authority, development infrastructure program to construct public water and wastewater utility improvements and related infrastructure in Phase Two of Tradition Medical City to serve Mississippi State Veterans Nursing Home at Tradition, requesting authorization for Harrison County to construct the improvements, acknowledging that the East Central Harrison County Public Utilities District shall remain said water and wastewater utilities and for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion?
That's the grant, no matching funds required.
No matching from the county, the developer asked to guarantee that the right of way is donated, which is a match.
It's the best kind, yeah, we like that.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll go to item four, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving lease agreement with J. Boyes for approximately one acre of land within the by the Bernard Industrial Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item five, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing approving a lease purchase agreement with Kings Ford Steel for approximately nine acres of land within North Harrison County Industrial Park for use as a metal building fan shop. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Connie, I can't believe Connie's missing Harrison. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item six, order concurring with the resolution of the Development Commission authorizing approving lease agreement. I know, this is an additional one acre of land with the North Harrison County Industrial Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, they leased a shop and a modular building on one acre until they can get their permit from Patrick to get Owen to build up the nine acres, so it's a two-step process.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item numbers seven through 15 have been placed on the consent agenda, the same appearing to be looked in, non-controversial matters on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 16, order approving travel and hotel stay for Paula Latner to attend a 92nd Annual Mississippi Assessors and Collectors Conference, July 12th through 15th in Oxford, Mississippi, estimated cost of $400. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 17, order approving in-county travel reimbursement for the tax assessors offices listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 18, order lodging receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2020 real property rule. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 19, order approving hotel and travel expenses for the tax collector to attend the 2021 MACA Summer Conference in Oxford, estimated cost is $400. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 20, order approving the low quoted Gilbert Custom Homes in the amount of $13,541 for refurbishing the kitchen area in the tax collector's office in the First Judicial Courthouse, payable from 001104641 and approving budget amendment for the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 21, order approving registration fees for tax collector employees Caitlin Gonzalez, Jordan Barnett, and Anita Jackson to attend the Mississippi Tax Collector Education and Certification Program. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 22, order spreading on the minutes personnel changes for tax collector's offices listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 23, order approving mileage reimbursement for Justice Corps employees as listed and payable from 001166475. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 24, order declaring the real property located at 510 Sandy Hook Drive as for Jan, being more particularly identified as tax parcel number 0213C01035.001, to no longer be a potential related property and canceling the public hearing set for today at 10:00 a.m. to determine the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I just saw that they're here.
Oh, they're here for number 25, different one, different property.
Okay, oh, gotcha, okay, different parcel.
Yeah, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We have a hearing set for 10:30, so we will come back to that. Item 25. Item 26, order approving payment of claims as listed and recommended by Jackie Turner, Harrison County engineer. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 27, order accepting the RFP of Look Great Services of Mississippi, received on April 29th for emergency disaster and provisional debris removal and disposal services, as scored by the selection committee and reviewed by the board attorney. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in...
Was that, was that the lowest, or was it just considered the best?
It was the lowest bid and then we investigated everything with their history and their references, their bonding capacity and all that kind of thing.
So, they were the lowest as well as the best?
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 28, order approving of request by Harrison County Emergency Management Director Matt Stratton for the third draw of $50,000 from the $200,000 grant for the finance unmet needs of the community through Harrison County Long-Term Recovery Committee, as per the agreement between the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, Harrison County Long-Term Recovery Committee, and Mississippi Emergency Management Agency. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Madam President.
Yes.
We have a 10 o'clock bid opening for the property on Gulfport Estate Properties.
Okay.
We have two bids that we need to call and make sure that there's no... They were supposed to turn them in by 9:00 today.
Okay.
So, this is on the Dido Park property and lots 1 through 10.
Yes.
We have two bids.
Oh, so what do I need to do, so?
Angela has them and she'll have to open them. I'll call purchasing, make sure they don't have any more in my office.
Okay, so you want...
Purchasing, Anthony? Yeah. Yeah, they were supposed to come to my...
We didn't have anything this morning.
Dead line was 9:00.
Yes.
Get the ones you have Angela will open them.
Yeah. Yeah, they were supposed to be delivered or received by 9:00, just one of my offices. Be opened at 10:00. Thank you.
I think they're doing, have it open at 10:00. There's some pretty property out there.
Yeah, but I went by there, floods, I mean, the street was completely underwater and the city of Gulfport gave it to us because they didn't want the headache, the people potentially drowning, it's full of litter, I mean, we need to get rid of it.
I know, but I have a lot of good memories there.
We don't need to hear about that, Beverly. Sounds very private.
It was a park, it was a...
When it was a park, so that's what we...
Don't hold back. Don't hold back, man.
Wait for our break, we can talk about it.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Tell her you really, really care.
Okay. Did we get up on the wrong side of the bed today? Is Pollyanna not so fine today?
I was trying to be funny, but you know, we're just killing time.
I know. But that's who I'm talking about.
Yeah, nothing to purchase.
Okay, so we will open the bids for the Miss Ma'am's favorite park. We'll get Miss Angela. So Miss Ma'am.
All right, so the first bid we have is with David Koswich. He's submitting, he's submitting the bid for fifty-six thousand, one hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. You writing this down, Julie, or do you need me to?
Pardon me?
Are you gonna write it?
I'm done.
Okay. The second bid is where Bruce Strain. The bid amount is thirty-six thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars.
Sounds like Mr. Koswich and the winner is?
Mr. Koswich.
General believes?
Mr. Koswich.
David Koswich.
This is one of the deals we did the highest bid.
Yeah, the highest bid, fifty-six thousand, one ninety-nine.
The board needs an order authorizing to accept the highest bid on the surplus property and to, for us to close the transaction.
So do I have a motion to accept the highest bill and close this transaction?
I told you. Spread on minutes.
And spread on minutes. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The man.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Congratulations, we take it.
I have good memories of that one.
You can't have it anytime you want.
You know you want.
Give you a key to the gate.
Good, as long as there's a gate. I really am worried about children.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
It's locked up pretty good because I had to climb up.
Well, there's a lot of people that still trespass even with the signs, so.
Yeah.
Now it's probably... Made for liability.
Yeah, so now, now it's, now I could get arrested. I'd say, okay.
Ours was the Second Street Park. If that makes any difference, where we went parking.
I'm sorry.
Just to listen to music.
Did you have a question, sir? I saw his hand go. Jackie, we landed. Oh, that's okay. Okay, moving on. Item twenty-nine. Orders reading on the minutes executed lease agreement to Inflorance Cards LLC and Harrison County Mississippi for property located at one two three two one Reservation Drive. Do we have a motion and a second for discussion?
I guess the first, I would move to not spread on minutes based on this and then subsequent to that, do the other motion. Tim?
Yeah.
So we have a motion to not spread on the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I was gonna ask Willie to come up and give us a report on the condition of that building. Thank you.
Hello?
Morning.
This would be while we are not spreading on the minutes. We wanna hear it.
We, uh, the code office and the fire department also have some reports. The building's in bad shape. It needs a roof. There's maybe four or five offices that it could use now, but we only had thirty minutes to take a look at it, and we couldn't check all the air conditions or anything like that, but they had a couple of them working. But there's this bad damage to the roof. I mean, the whole back of the building's caving in, structural beams are falling. They've been patched for years and years. And, I mean, the gym, with all the ceiling leaks and everything, you've got mold growing and water damage everywhere. All the ceilings are water damaged. So it's, it would be real costly.
And this is important because the lease includes the maintenance.
We would have to do all that.
It would, it would, it would cost a lot just to get it up to where we could maintain it. I mean, I don't have a big enough department or the money to...
It would have to be cut and packed it out.
It would have to be, yeah.
And your best estimate, I know you would say why, a million?
It would, yeah, probably, probably close to a million to the roof and, and we'd have to really inspect it again to get a good number. But, yeah, it's in pretty good shape. There's no parking. There's no ADA accessibility to anywhere. There's no fire alarms. There's no smoke detectors. There's no, I don't even think the fire could get in there at the fire department. There's just no parking or anything.
The engine, the fire engine.
Fire engine could get in there.
Willie, can I ask, probably with the building even being usable for something where people, members of the public could use without upgrading with it?
Not really. I mean, there's, there's a few offices that they could use, but, I mean, it's, it's just a matter of time before the rest of the roof goes. And you wouldn't forsake the readings for anybody in there with it. I mean, one room in the back's got a tarp hanging from the ceiling made into a funnel that goes into a horse draw that's piped out the back, the back wall. They got a hole knocked in the wall with a pipe going out. And they got the doors in there sandbagged so it can't get out to the rest of the rooms. And it looks like it's been like that for a long time.
What's the board's pleasure?
Tim, based on the fact that we've signed the lease, what's the appropriate motion to?
I think the board should consider an order rescinding the authority to enter into the lease and cancel the lease.
I make that motion.
So we have a motion to rescind the lease. I'm sorry, would you restate?
To rescind the, rescind the order authorizing the lease.
Rescind the order authorizing the lease based on the condition of the building.
The outside building, fire and code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Anybody came from the youth court to discuss it?
Yeah, apparently.
I just have one question on the, do you want me to come up front?
Sure.
The buildings that Willie mentioned, the one that said the office space is fine now, that's the center building, all under one roof, and that would be the visitation rooms that are also there, which is a total, I think, of six, maybe, three on each side. So I guess my question would be, the building that he's saying that is operational for office space isn't under the same roof as those classrooms that we would utilize for visitation. So is that included in the space that's operational? So this is all on the same roof in the same building? And it's the outline buildings that understand the report that he made, but that center?
It's all one roof. It's all one roof all the way across the top. And the center rooms would have to be replaced, too.
Because that's the ones that are the office space that he's ever utilized, that could be utilized. Because we did discuss with the Goldens at one point is to operate out of one building, the one that was remodeled by the ministry, I think that was there for we entered into this lease. So I guess the question would be, can we entertain or propose we just use that one center building to start with and then not utilize the other buildings? Because that has been some of the things.
I don't know if the fire access applies to that. Somebody up for the fire department?
Yes.
You'd have to actually apply to the Good City of Gulfport, too.
Yeah.
Good City of Gulfport, but...
But what I'm asking, Tim...
Did y'all see the condition of the rest of this building when y'all went out there to look at?
We did. And we knew that it would be a project that would expand because it would be a three-year grant. We would have funds each year to...
A million dollars.
No, we didn't. We don't. Didn't get a quote for a million dollars that we had, so.
Let's hear from the fire department.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Skid Bell's working, a fire prevention officer. So we did a very brief walkthrough. So we did a...
We got it.
Plan review?
Yes, here we go. Speak for the record.
So anyway, the main thing, like safety-wise, whether it be the, the east building or west building, there's no access whatsoever. You could not get a fire truck here. It's kind of a ditty, and they have a gate. At one time, I guess, went through the school and into the parking lot of the church. That's gated off now. There's just, there's no access at all. So if anything happened in that building, I don't know how the guys could get to it with water. It's almost impossible.
Is it the auditorium that we're talking about?
Auditorium, you could get to it on the parking lot. But as far as the office floor, there's just no access.
The access road that they just put in that looked all the way around the back, would it be considered an access road to that?
No, that stops at the water tower. We did. So, and you can't have anything over a hundred and fifty foot without turning around any of that. But you can't do it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to rescind the order authorizing the lease. So we need to start over on that. So any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed?
Local parent order.
Motion carries. We'll get an order.
I know we had some discussions with Judge and everything. Could y'all possibly look at the former shelter as a possibility? I don't know. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but it might take some remodeling or whatever to meet your needs, but it seems to me like that, I know he said that it wouldn't, but looking at that, look at that particular facility and see, I might be...
Well, we're in talks with Devon and Children's Methodist Homes to do a greater purpose for the truly at risk. But I suggested to Judge, we have that beautiful playground of hope, that we got the CDs to build, and I know that y'all really like the playground, and I do, too. With the sixty-nine thousand a year match for three years, that's two-hundred and ten thousand dollars. We could build a nice little, beautiful, brand-new, small building. You don't need twenty-six thousand square feet for visitation. You could have keypad on it. You could let CPS access. That CPS must be there. We will never again have a visitation on Harrison County property without CPS. I'm very adamant about that.
They've been at every visitation since twenty-nineteen.
Since we found out they weren't?
So it's twenty-nineteen.
Okay. Because you know at our shelter there wasn't. So that's my thing, but...
We met with the board, I think, in twenty-nineteen and discussed the, the concern liability of CPS not being present. So since that time at the shelter, there has been a CPS representative there since the discussion.
Right now.
Okay, well, that's not accurate because I got elected January sixth, twenty-twenty, and I've had, you, you know, you know what's gone on there. We've seen the text, so let's not even go there. My point is, we would be willing to, I would be willing to do that, but, but not some dilapidated twenty-six thousand square feet building.
No, but here's the thing. Right now, we have, we are obligated to provide them sixty-nine thousand dollars a year.
Right.
For that purpose, for a visitation center.
Correct. And we could use that two-hundred thousand dollars to build one.
But I mean, why would we not? How far out are we in negotiations? Are you in negotiations?
I think probably within two months.
Oh, okay. It's a couple of years.
The board is just waiting on state numbers. CPS gave me numbers, but they, you know, I need federal numbers.
I did send some of them.
She's been talking to a group that may come in there.
Methodist children.
Yeah. But I was, my question to her was, how far out would that be? Is it five years from now? But her answer was two months. So it's sooner rather.
I know that they, the center that they've been working on in Jackson, Judge and I toured that, I think, in twenty-nineteen, and they still not opened their doors to that. Their goal is June.
Well, you know, we do have the old police station in DeIverville. It might not be real kid-friendly.
It's too big, too.
But it's, well, it's sitting there empty, so.
It's also a training. I mean, it's, the point, the goal is for the training site as well as the visitation, which was one of the reasons that the auditorium would be phenomenal for us to have. Just to circle back to the Westminster.
That's off the table.
We are not allowed to request one building on that property?
That's off the table.
That is really off. That facility is just like the fire.
That's off the table.
Yeah, that, that's an issue.
And if you look at the pictures y'all showed us, and then the pictures of reality, I mean, come on.
Okay, that's off the table. Let's go back to...
We just gotta find something to justify this decision out of that.
Yeah, because stuff is... They're proposing based on that grant that we're not gonna be able to approve because we took that out.
Right. But have, have you seen the former DeIvill Police Department?
No.
Would you like to go look at it? It's empty right now. Now, they still have the lease, I think, through October, but I'm sure it's, nobody's in there. So come in, we'll arrange.
And also, she gonna have what Dr. Lannan was saying, that a possibility the guys could reconsider. What would you do with the youth board? I mean, whether it work or not, if it could be reconsidered, shelter, I'm sorry.
Right.
But I think...
If the, if the false route, Children's Methodist House, absolutely.
I would think that.
Anything to try to help.
Except for what you're talking about, that would be the best alternative.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, for sure.
Can we give them a drop date?
Yeah.
We need a, I guess, five to sixty days, about that.
Okay.
That's two months. Y'all get with that. We get a commitment or not from the, a yes or no from the Methodist people in sixty days.
Is there any timeframe on your grant, but...
We were awarded the grant in writing in October. The funds are there, ready to be drawn down. That was seven months ago. I, I have not gotten an answer as far as if they will, I think they'll hang on to us for an extended amount of time, and we would just at the very end of the grant ask for an extension to make up for the months that we missed since October. That's the, the short, brief answer I've gotten on that question because I think we talked about that last time. So, yeah, we can play limbo. We'd rather not play limbo because we have people waiting to be on our program based on the capacity that we can meet our needs up, so.
I think you, we had, you had to revise your grant from the shelter.
Correct.
To the, what's the name of the bill?
A couple of things, but Westminster wasn't included, I hear.
And you put that in there, now we taking that out. Might have to go back to...
Correct.
That worked out with one.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Just so the board remembers, the, the grant, the sixty-nine thousand dollars was providing two rooms as a visitation. So that, my recollection, two rooms.
That's all, huh?
I reviewed...
And it got expanded through this discussion.
That's been my issue all along.
Because Westminster had more space. That's how that got expanded and all this other stuff.
I reviewed the grant, and I could not find the two. I know I've never submitted anything with two rooms, and I haven't been able to find anything in writing.
That was the discussion with this board, and there's tapes of that. I remember the discussion of two rooms. The board said, we can find two rooms somewhere.
Well, that's the next thing I would list to you.
Like the MLK building, you want for the, you know, office space for the new people you're hiring. I'm sure there's room in there for a visitation, but he really does want the playground, and I get that. So, I'll get with Devon, and if they say no, then we can probably do that.
We say something to the board just about this because unfortunately, when we started this process, we said, let them bring to us a lease.
Right.
Part of the problem with that is, what we're dealing with here is, when you do that, you're totally dependent on what they bring you in making your decision, which can be a problem.
Well, we're trying to...
We got this a little bit backwards. We should have sent somebody out there to look at the building.
Which is on here. That's on number thirty-one.
Okay.
Upon inspection of building by county.
Secondly, too, I, I, before I vote on the lease, I'd like to see it and read it, the actual lease itself.
Okay, so we are moving on to number thirty. Order approving travel for Charles Roberts and Brian Henry, treatment providers for family and juvenile drug courts, to attend certified criminal justice associate conference in Pearl, Mississippi. Estimated cost, cost for both is two thousand ninety dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one. Consider approving lease agreement between Professional Building LLC in Harrison County for the property located at seven one one Dr. Mark Luther King Junior Boulevard, Unit One Biloxi, upon inspection of building by the county. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Particularly the inspection, or to the approval.
Do, do I need to coordinate with Teresa Hydrick on that, just as early as we can get that, like we did?
We'll take all three. We need...
Take Willie.
Same as we did.
Take the fire, take the building grant Willie, the fire department, and...
Just come in and take through Pam. Pam can do it.
Yeah, Pam can do it.
We'd also add that subject to our review of the final lease before execution.
The lease was, we put together a finalized lease? Okay. I just want to make sure the board approves that.
We've, we've got the lease, but I did want to look at it again if the board will authorize us to look at it before this one gets executed. It's a subject to...
Okay, because this was just considered, so we have to prove it anyways.
But it has to be spread on the minutes.
Right. So all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Valerie. Thirty-two. Consider approving the FIP enhancement grant budget. Do we have a motion?
I don't think we can do that.
I don't.
With what we've just done, because in that budget, it specifically states that building.
Correct.
And so I, I don't know if we need to table this or reject it, let you present another budget or what, but... But once you get the building straight.
If, if it's possible through the grant agency for me to just not put a specific location, but just put like funding for a visitation center location to go ahead and get the monies approved, or I can draw on federal funds at least.
See a problem with that as long as we got to approve it.
And can you change that and get it back to us for next Monday, Paula?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so.
To table?
Yeah, take a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Any further discussion? So you're gonna clean that up and bring.
I'll just remove that.
And just give it back to Brittany, and we'll put it on Monday.
Consider the grant, will it mean?
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-three. Order adjudicating submission of a letter to SMPDD for notice of intent to submit a proposal for the fiscal year twenty-one. You got twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one-twenty-two, you mean? Okay, sort of correct that. Proposal deadline was May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Budget period is October one, twenty-twenty-one through September, twenty-twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? What is it they're proposing? I'm sorry.
I, I think that's all you senior citizens.
Yeah, I thought.
Realizing, I think, that something I said you're planning is the, I guess, like Butterway, President Minister, say. Give us the money.
We like that. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-four. Order concurring with Planning Commission's decision to, I'm sorry, let me recognize that.
There are no minimum appeals today. This is our, this is thirty-four through forty. The main cases for the Planning Commission would ask to concur with the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Do we have a motion to concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Silver. Item forty-one. Personnel order of proven claims is listed to be paid from the tour account. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two. Order spreading up on the minutes, the personnel changes with Sheriff's Office is listed non-file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-three. Order concurring with the road manager on employment is listed and on file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four. Order concurring with the county administrator on employment is listed non-file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-five. Order concurring with Chancellor Clerk on employment and personnel changes is on file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-six. Order concurring with the Intervention Court on personnel changes listed non-file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven. Order designating any board supervisor, Jake Attorney Engineer Dusty Reed, Brian Engineer Tim Smith, Road Manager Mike Sean Woods, Road Manager, and any board designated to serve on the selection review committee and scoring of RFQs for geotechnical engineering services. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion.
Yes.
For that, uh, RFQs for that asphalt testing, fire reading.
Oh, got you. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sad sad.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-eight. Order logs and receipt of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two annual term bids received and authorizing the award of factor two lob one of each estabulated, with the lowest bidder being best and principal supplier, and next low bidder being the alternate supplier recommended by the purchase clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Tim, is this the one that you gave me a note on to reject?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
That is, uh, number fifty-two.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine. Order knowledge and receipt of PBRB approved sealed annual term bids received March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one for groups. Ten-two ready mixed concrete, ten-seven eight asphalt milling, ten-seven B asphalt scrub seal, slurry seal, micro-surfacing. I'm gonna give you a test later. Ten-eight corrugated polyurethane covert pipe, ten-nine pesticides and chemicals, and authorizing the award of each rule estabulated. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Timmy, this is. Okay.
All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We're gonna do one more, and we'll get to the hearing. Order acknowledge and receipt of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two annual term bid group, ten-three crushed limestone FOB yard plant pickup received May twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Are all the parties here for the, uh, ten-bow hearing? Come forward, please, and give us your name and address. Let me read it real quick. So we're back on item twenty-five. It says. A hearing to determine whether the property owned by John Ferguson Dane located at four-nineteen Sandy Hook Drive, Ashbridge, Kansas City, being more particularly identified as parcel number is blighted and is no longer in a state of repair suitable for use and occupancy, is neglected to the extent that structures are debris, debris and remnants from structures are a menace to the public health and safety of the citizens of Harrison County, or the structures are deliberate, dilapidated to an extent to be a danger or a blight to the community, and such property cannot be remedied under provisions of Section nineteen five-one-zero-five Mississippi Code nineteen-seventy-two. Uh, Mr. Bonk, are there any set rules on this? Or this first one I did?
The Code Office brought this case to the board, so I hadn't participated.
Okay, so what do we say?
This is, you want me to kind of lay it out? This is a.
Yes, thank you.
There are two different statutes. One of them is one is administer property statute. But other than that one, it has to be administered to the public health and safety. This is a second statute that expands upon that and allows you to declare properties to be a blight on the community. So at this point in time, the hearing is here. We should have evidence that it's a blighted property first. I'm not sure whose side you're on. Are you on the blighted?
He's Mr. Dane.
The homeowner, okay.
Or the property owner.
Does anybody from Code Office?
Okay, let's ask.
The property, there are photographs in the file showing that, I, I think this is it. I actually wrote mine a property a couple of weeks ago. It is pilings from an old house that was destroyed in Katrina, I assume.
Yeah, that are reusable.
Basically have pilings sticking up, and the complaints have come from the neighbors about the pilings have been there since Katrina and not, not, uh, nowhere has been made to build a house or do anything to restore it back to. And they, they believe it's a blight on their community. So essentially, yeah.
You have a good idea?
Teresa.
They're complaining all, all over, and they complain all the time, and.
There was one gentleman that called me to complain about it. I have to go through emails to find his name, but he complained about the, not only this one, but several others with the pilings that have been sitting there since Katrina.
Are they here?
They're not here.
And do they even live on the street? It's a dead-end street. I mean, is it just, he's driving around complaining about lots?
It's not a dead-end street. It's a circle. It's all the way around.
It's not dead-end at all. That's why I gave most data.
So, Mr. Dane, can you show us otherwise?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to bring some stuff forward to show y'all.
Thank you.
I've got a list of exhibits that I've put together, including pictures of my property, pictures of the neighbor's property, letters from my neighbors saying that this is not a nice order to them, my closest neighbors. A letter from my real estate agent that says the slab adds value. Letter from a contractor that says it would cost over a hundred thousand dollars to replace, um, anything or replace if it was removed. And a letter from an engineer that actually designed and built this originally that says that he would not hesitate to reuse what is there for a new client on that existing slab.
Is this property for sale?
This property is for sale. I have it listed with John McDonald Realty. If we'd like to go through, um, I've kept this property professionally maintained for multiple years. That's exhibit one. You can see from the street. I planted fourteen oak trees five years ago with every intention of moving back there. Have a sprinkler system set up. I said I get this professionally maintained by all seasons landscape. Second exhibit is a view of the slab from the bulkhead looking back towards the house, the slab, excuse me. The third exhibit is exhibit from my slab towards the water. The fourth exhibit is a view of the piece of property directly across from mine. As you can see, it is overgrown with a slab. I would consider that a haven for garments.
Okay, where's your, which one is yours?
No, that's the neighbor across the street. So what I did is I, directly across the street, there are two slabs, one on either side of the road, that have slabs. They're, they're well overgrown. There's debris still from Zeta and Michael.
Question.
No problems.
Question, Tim, does the slab, can the slab be by definition blighted? Create a blighted, blighted property?
I can see and envision that it could, but if it's just a flattened slab that you're looking, see, I would say probably not. I think the complaint here, as I understand it, is pilings that's sticking up from two thousand five.
I know Mr. Dane has indicated that those pilings can be used again. And you have, your engineer at Center Co., do you have any, uh, opinion about those being used again as far as the height or any other conditions?
Yes, sir.
That he could in fact use those?
Well, we do not believe that those pilings, due to them being, the property now being in a velocity zone. When it was constructed originally, it was in an A-zone, and it has been placed in the two-thousand-nine mountains. It's placed in a velocity zone. So you're dealing with the wind and wave action and everything now.
So you're.
So you're talking about the, the.
The height.
The way or the height as well?
Well, the height as well. It's at least four foot too low.
It's four foot too low?
Yes.
And you have to add on to that, those older pilings? Could it do that?
There again.
Over to the engineer, yes, sir.
For an engineer, but like I said, that type of foundation, the, because it was the, the stacked blocks from what we look out, out there, it was wrapped in brick, but it was, what is exposed were stacked columns, and it's recommended to do post piles in our columns, not your stacked.
It has poured concrete in those cinder blocks.
Yes, sir.
And there is a standard method to extend columns. It's done all the time to concrete buildings with rebar. I'm a civil engineer. I'm not sure if you can get this far. And I built the property. So the engineer's letter says, of course, they, they need to meet the new rules, and it's easy to, to improve the columns to meet not only the zone length, but the height.
Y'all, you could add to those columns?
Yeah, yes, sir. There are multiple different ways to do it.
Put rebar on side of each rebar. You extend it up. You pour concrete. It's done in every high-rise concrete building. David, if you go watch the actual construction technique.
There are also multiple ways to do it.
But would you give your name and address just for?
Sorry, I'm, I'm John Dane the third. I was the prior owner of the property and had the house on it that was lost.
And this is John.
I'm John F. Dane. I'm the owner of the property now. I'm John F. Dane. I'm the owner of the property now. Exhibit twelve is from the engineer that designed the foundation. I also have a copy of the foundation drawings that he used. And he specifically mentions it was designed for, for the winds over a hundred and thirty. That this is all reusable, with the exception of five columns. Three were removed and two are damaged. Those columns would need to be removed, but you can build new ones. I beam or build new columns on the footers that are existing.
Would you be willing to move, remove them?
The pilings?
Or the columns?
The columns. I would prefer not to. I've got the lot for sale right now. My, my, my real estate agent says he gets a lot of calls. It is the last lot for sale on Sandy Hook. I would like to point out, um, exhibit eight was a builder saying it would cost over a hundred thousand, but exhibit ten is my neighbor closest to the south. She wrote a letter saying that this is not disturbing her at all, and she is directly adjacent to my property. I can read it for you, or y'all can read it.
Grass is cut regularly, and it is not full of trash.
Yeah, it's not full of trash. It's cut regularly. And then I also have exhibit eleven is the next neighbor further south. The lot to the north of me is empty. But the neighbor to the further south appreciates the fact that I keep it maintained. The one just to the south of him has rodents. He's excited to hear there's a cleanup effort in the county, but he doesn't feel that this property is a problem, nor has it been in the last three to four years that he has been there.
I think the issue too, of course, whether the columns can be used or not, and if they can.
Saying yes.
But how long is it gonna be? We're talking about Katrina, what, fifteen years ago?
I'm trying to sell the property right now.
And, you know, even though they can be used, they could still be by definition blighted, the columns sticking up out there. So if they can be used, if somebody's willing to go ahead and at some point use them, if they can, I'm not saying they can, that would be ultimately to.
That's how we're marketing the property, is everything there still.
Fifteen years, they're sticking up, are they gonna be sticking up fifteen years?
Well, yeah, Barlen, but it wasn't for sale for fifteen years, like the Westminster Building, for instance.
I just put it up for sale.
He just put it up for sale. How long is your, um, listing agreement?
I think it had a little over ten months left.
Ten months, so let's revisit it in ten months, I don't think. I mean, if you're gonna tear something down that's worth a hundred thousand dollars.
That's fine, and if he sells it, still fine, then how long?
Then what?
Then what? How long are they gonna be there before the next owner decides to build on? It's the community that's, that's concerned about it, and I respect your neighbors and it does, it, it looks pretty, I don't deny that.
I'll agree, if you want, um, at the end of my lease, if it hasn't sold, to remove the columns?
You mean listing.
At the end of my listing agreement, I'm sorry.
Let us revisit it.
Yeah, if he's willing to do, yes.
I, I'm looking at pictures and I've been there, and I do not think, you said it's pretty, I don't think it's a nice order, but that's my opinion.
Well, the problem, keep in mind, the problem is that there are oodles of those things, they're not as nice as he is, but there are oodles, I shouldn't say that, there are a number of vacant properties that were destroyed by the storm that have these pilings all sticking up, they're not as nice as he is.
If that weren't designed to meet the new standards, either, this house was overbuilt at the time and it's still standing.
But at some point, this needs to be taken care of, is what I'm saying. If you're willing to do that, I don't have a problem with that.
Can I make a suggestion that we enter an order, we draft an order saying that we got until the end of his listing agreement and he agrees to take it down at the end of the list, so we don't have to go back through the process?
Do we have a motion to draft the order, or do I need to wait on the order first?
If he's willing to, if he's willing to agree to wait until the end of his listing contract, you can give me the date of that, we enter an order saying that he agrees to remove them.
If it's not sold.
After the end of his listing agreement, if it's not sold.
I saw you.
Do we have a second?
Unless you got some more you want.
I'm sorry.
I don't want.
I prefer not to remove them, but, uh, yeah, May, I think it's May.
Do you have an email where I can send you a copy?
It's on here.
Yeah, yes, sir, uh, J.F. Dane at Gmail.
We have a motion, but I do not have a second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. So Mr. Hallman, I'll give you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Senior.
I'll send you my, once I get your order, I'll send you my listing.
Tell Leslie I sent it. Haven't seen her.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we? Item fifty-one. Order rejecting a ten-seven-eight asphalt milling annual term sealed bid received from Warren Paven on March twenty bid that's recommended by purchase clerk and road manager. Do we have a motion to reject?
Uh, motion, discussion, Tim, you're on.
What's this?
Just why are we rejecting that?
Sure. So we have, we have, um.
I'll second it. I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We have one bid that is with the minimum of five thousand square yards at two dollars, and then we have a second bid with a minimum of twelve hundred square yards at two dollars and fifty cents. And then the Warren bid, they have a minimum of one thousand square yards at six dollars. So I discussed it with the road manager about rejecting that, that's a fifty-eight percent difference there, and we'd be forced in to utilize that price rather than if we go anything less than the other, um, we could get quotes on it.
And you stick to the same.
And not to tie in as a fifty.
Most likely it's going to, uh, go to the six thou. Uh, excuse me, how, how many square yards for here? Five?
Up to five thousand, two dollars and fifty cents, right.
So five thousand is two dollars per square yard.
So with rejecting Warren's, they were six dollars or something, so that's a big difference.
Yeah.
So did, is it on here to accept the two dollar bid?
I'm sorry?
Do you have another order on here to accept the lowest bid?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that was done, and the earlier numbers there.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, rejecting the ten-seven-eight asphalt milling from Warren Paven.
We need to reject a bid before we accept.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Brittany, I didn't catch it, but yeah, it's kinda out of order. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two, order rejecting the only bid received on May eighteenth from Lyle Machinery for one or more new mid-mountain road construction sweepers. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second discussion, Tim.
Yes, sir, I give all of y'all a copy of this. The first, uh, page of it is the reverse auction, and this is just how we need to get away from this reverse auction stuff. Only bidder was Lyle Machinery, nobody else to bid, and it was four thousand dollars higher than my cheapest quote. The second two pages are my two quotes that I had gotten previous to, to the reverse auction. The lowest was fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-one, and the second one was fifty-four thousand two hundred and six dollars.
I thought we did not, I thought we no longer had to use reverse auction. Mr. Lattner, is that?
That was for, for one.
July first?
Just for the, just for.
Annual term bids, uh, the governor's going to sign, it's supposed to sign on July first, that, um, that we will no longer use reverse auction for annual term bids.
Well, good, that's about three weeks from now, so.
But then that's, this is commodities.
This is, this has told me something different. The problem I have is this keeps rocking on, months after months after months, every time we reject. When I put in a order and buy, and this is not just one road sweeper, this is three of them. So with me rejecting almost a four thousand dollar more bid, I'm looking on three twelve thousand dollars more.
Can he buy it on state contract? Is this something that would be on state contract?
It's not on state contract, which their team got as well.
What Tim is saying is if we had a standard, uh, paper bid on what's the term, uh?
Yeah, sealed.
Sealed bid.
Your companies won't even.
Most likely that the lowest sealed bid would've come in at the fifty-two thousand.
Or under.
Or under, possibly even under. But with the electronic bid, you wind up with just one bidder with fifty-seven.
And that one bidder can name his price and inflects that price so high.
Yeah, he's the only one.
Correct. I also looked on the used market, there's nothing on the used market besides junk.
So what do you?
Well, what you gonna do about it, Tim, to get you these, this machine, this stuff?
Yeah, you need it.
So, our option at this point by the pure block is that we can make the request to PPRB requesting exemption from reverse auction based on the experience we had.
And you've done that.
They can authorize that, ma'am.
And you've done that.
He's, he's gonna do it now.
No, I'm going to do it now, you know, this was coming up.
So you can't go ahead and apply for it knowing that this was on the agenda?
Well, my, the buying process is terrible, it's to the point that I don't care buying anything because of the process.
Y'all know a request for exemption on this.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three.
Authorize him to request an exemption, board needs to authorize him to request it.
Authorize re-advertising as well.
I saw you.
I would if I were y'all had authorized, so it's coming from the board.
Yes. I make a motion, authorize purchasing to seek exemption from, what is it, PPRB?
PPRB.
Uh, and to what, Tim?
And to re-advertise.
And to the house guys.
I second that.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three, order approving the purchase of one Dodge Ram fifteen hundred extended cab four-wheel drive, state contract, truck number zero seven zero four eight five two three oh one eight, uh, an authorizing budget amendment to be reimbursed by West Harrison Water and Sewer District. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four, order accepting the only bid received from Warren Paven for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two annual term bid group, ten-four rip rap three hundred pound plant pickup received on April twenty-ninth and awarded as tabulated and recommended by the purchase clerk and road manager. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-five, order accepting the only bid received from Warren Paven for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two annual term bid for rip rap three hundred pounds delivered, received on April thirtieth and awarded as tabulated and recommended by purchase clerk and road manager. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Tim, why are you only getting one bid? I mean, where's?
Our other supplier, they don't, they don't fool with it for a river.
No, they, they submitted specs, and they said they were gonna bid, so when we were approaching the, uh, the bid, we had two bidders on board, which are the typical two bidders. And, um, and then when I realized when we had our first one for that bid group, I contacted them afterwards and they said that they had decided not to bid that group at all.
That's what he said. That's what he said. Okay, so motion and second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six, order acknowledging that no bids were received for the group ten-four rip rap hundred pound plant pickup. No requests for re-advertisements recommended by the purchase clerk and the road manager. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, Timmy, why?
Yeah, why wouldn't he bid on the hundred pound?
And why do you not wanna re-advertise for that? One of y'all.
Okay, yes, ma'am, so I discussed the re-advertising with the road manager, and, um, he didn't feel the need to re-advertise for that. And then as far as why didn't we receive any bids, we had, um, the one bidder had indicated after I called them on the other one, that they decided to not bid that group at all. And then the other bidder missed it on their calendar and clearly stated that they made an error.
So, Tim, why would we not want to re-advertise for this?
I don't think we're gonna get a better bid, our price on the bid and just get the quote.
Oh, gotcha.
Tim, on the hundred pound, three hundred pound, what does that indicate? The size of the rock?
The size of the rock, um, for statewide banks, you got a hundred pound is everything from small up to a hundred pound, then the three hundred pounds, everything's small up to the biggest rock, three hundred pound.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, order accepting the only bid received from Warren Paven for rip rap one hundred pound delivered, received April twenty-eighth as, as recommended by the purchase clerk and road manager. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight, order authorizing advertisement to receive bids for the construction of the Harris County Law Enforcement Training Academy in Davenport. Do we have a motion?
Motion, authorize.
Do we have a second? Oh, did you have the money? For your, to start construction for the Harris County Law Enforcement Training Academy? Did y'all get the rest of the money?
She's got it.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine, we'll recognize the sheriff's stand-in, Ron Hula, as he reports on the number of people from the outside jail.
And we got five hundred and eighty-seven today, uh, forty-one misdemeanors, a hundred and sixteen females, uh, thirty-five cleared state arrests, and twenty-nine federal inmates.
You know, the gentleman earlier suggested using inmates for trash pickup, is there a reason why we don't do that anymore?
Oh, we do that.
Oh, we do?
We have two trucks.
Okay, cool.
We have two, one that works from forty-nines to divide and park, and, uh, they, they work it every day. Whether it's not raining or foggy or something like that.
On state highways, right?
On, on the state highways, and, uh, we'll get.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get any mechanic.
Right. And that is a job, that is a, a job. I mean, it's, he's right. Every, they, they clean up one, you know, one section and, and days later it's trash. I, I don't know why I, it baffles me that you drive into Alabama, so we don't see that. I don't, I don't.
Generally a cultural problem.
Yeah, you can see the difference at Alabama, you go from Florida to Alabama down that highway, no tracks on Florida side, Alabama cigarette butts everywhere. There's a difference where they, I guess where they.
Now, you can see that driving eighty miles an hour.
I walk, I've been walking, I lost fifteen pounds.
You can see those cigarettes.
I don't run another twenty-five, but my birth is maybe.
As far as law enforcement, I, I, that, that's difficult, you just happen to have to be there when it happens.
And, and we do, uh, our deputies do stop a lot of the trucks that are not parked and covered, and, and they, they get warnings, and, uh, we do write some things. You have to basically be there to see, you know, McDonald's bag or something like that.
I think as far as those trucks, the garbage trucks, we're gonna have to put pressure on them on a contract, on obligation to stop them.
To cover them.
To cover them, some way.
Okay, item sixty.
Couple of tickets or stuff.
Order, order approving the following invoices to Machado Patano for professional engineering service for their law enforcement training academy in the amount of fifty-two thousand three seventy-five. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-one, order authorizing the sheriff's office to sell one Dodge Model Twenty-two, asset number two-three-six-two-six, retiring major fetal mar for a fee of one dollars allowed by Mississippi Code Section forty-five-nine-one-three-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Y'all sell tasers too?
Do I?
Y'all sell those tasers too?
And I would, we would sell.
I want that.
We've always.
You'd be dangerous.
I want one of those. Talk to me later. Item sixty-two.
Probably won't like that.
Yeah, I need a, I need a taser, man. Order proving payout application number thirteen from Dixon Contracting Group for the Harris County Adult Detention Center Jail upgrades and repairs in the amount of one forty-six three sixty-eight forty-five payable from three-one-three-two-two-four-nine-oh-two as recommended by Brad Patano, Machado Patano Design Group. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-three, order acknowledging payout of one hundred twenty-eight thousand one twenty-two ninety-seven from oh-oh-one-two-oh-oh-five-oh-two to line oh-nine-seven-oh-oh-oh-three-four-oh, an authorizing budget amendment in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand one twenty-two ninety-seven back into, so this is going from the sheriff's telephone line item to the E-nine-eleven dispatch. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-four, order approving payments as claims listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-five, order approving the employment of Hopkins Barbie and Hopkins to defend the defendant's name in civil action number one-two-zero-CV-three-six-two-TBM-RPM styled Anthony Carter versus Trenton Freeman. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, why, who's?
It's a pro-sake prisoner complaint. It's got a minority complaint.
Okay.
About federal, oil class, very well.
And I hope we ain't tough on it, 'cause.
Yeah, we, it's, it's a silly, silly, silly hammered lawsuit, you're not going to win.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-six, order approving agreement with Machado Patano for architectural services relating to radio upgrades at the Harris County Adult Detention Center. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, yeah. For radios?
For radios, or is it just the building itself, Ron? Why would they be involved? It sounds like they're involved in radio recommendations. They're not doing that, are they?
It's, they're, they're overseeing the installation, they're gonna be the engineering firm for the installation on the new radio system that's inside the jail for the jailers.
They're capable of doing that, I, I guess I'm not.
Yeah, these are like engineers, right?
Right.
So, Donna, so are they qualified to do that?
They are.
I'm kinda with Marlon on that.
I just, I, I couldn't understand how that particular, unless they have somebody able to, it sounded like they're making recommendations of, about the radio system.
Jackie, is that something you could do? Just curious if all engineers have this capability?
I don't know much about it, but I'm gonna guess no, I don't know a lot about radio systems.
I'm kinda wondering about this too.
I got an idea what they're doing, it's simply designing the facility to, to accommodate the radio systems in there, but they're not doing anything as far as recommending upgrades or radio system, anything like that.
No, 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 sir, we.
Just the facility.
Just, that's what I would guess.
Just inside the facility.
Yeah.
So there's installation of the interior and exterior radio.
The way it's written, but you can't.
So what it says?
Can't go by that sometimes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-seven, order authorizing Neil Rash County Patrolman to be added to the list of take-home vehicles for after-hours and on-call. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, I thought he was part-time? Is he part-time?
Well, he is, but he's gonna be on-call.
He's, it's just like...
So still on-call?
Yeah, he's still on-call. He's retired, right? Just like, like Tom.
Or Tom, yeah.
But he's also been like a search and rescue scuba diver, a firefighter, a law enforcement sheriff's department forever. I mean, he's certainly a...
Yeah, I just wasn't thinking about on-call.
Yeah, well, Gene was, but Gene was full-time.
Right, but Tom is part-time.
Tom is retired, right?
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-eight, order approving payment to Pine Belt Mental Health Resources. Invoice numbers two-oh-two-one-oh-four, two-oh-two-one-oh-five, and two-oh-two-one-oh-six in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand eight forty-five for each monthly county contributions for April, May, and June. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion, what?
This is our budget of payment.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-nine, order approving payment of six thousand twenty-six dollars seventy-three cents to Alta Planning and Design for Professional Services on the Active Living Initiative. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy, order approving transfer of seventy-five hundred dollars from escrow to the road fund and authorizing budget amendment one-five-oh-three-oh-oh-four-three-oh for summer interns. Do we have a motion? This doesn't make sense. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion, okay, what is this?
That's where she's transferring escrow money to pay for summer, uh, summer employees.
District four.
And who's escrow?
District four.
Okay. I'm sorry, Glenn. I didn't understand. By escrow, we pay for...
They have a, they have, they hired them.
See, I'm actually making sure the summer workers come out of here.
There's no budget.
No.
That's right.
Oh, then we...
We have advertised, we haven't hired them.
So anybody in District one comes out of the escrow?
If you don't have money.
Y'all have a partial where with Jared Wayne retires. I use the...
Oh, okay, gotcha.
That, your summer workers could come out of that.
You don't feel that?
See, Mr. Jones, nobody has any open spots for...
Okay. Now you see that one, then? I got you. Go back. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Order seventy-one, order declaring zero value in executive chair requesting Judge Hughes to dispose of Sein with no cause to the county. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion, what is this? His old chair?
But can he dispose of it, or do we have to?
If he wanted to dispose, yes, he would.
That's what I'm, well, that's what it's saying, but...
It's in pretty bad shape, so he's, he can...
He can throw it away.
We'd have to have a county boy haul it off. He's willing to haul it off himself.
Okay.
And it may have sentimental value, but that's all it's got. It holds in it. He wore it out. Is that his dad's chair too?
Well, then you should keep it.
Sell it for a dollar.
Oh, he is keeping it?
So we're just, we're saying it's...
It's not, this guy's...
It's no value, you can't do that.
Got no value, cost you money to haul it off.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-two, order rescinding order date at May tenth. Item thirty-five with sale three, electric drivers located at Maple's Drive. There was no responsibility company interested in purchasing, and now the items will be sold for scrap. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-three. Excuse me one second. You might wanna call or text us. We're looking like we're running over you.
Okay.
Item seventy-three, order authorizing disposal of assets for attached lists and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-four, order approving mileage reimbursement for in-county travel for the following employees. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-five, order authorizing the reimbursement in the amount of one twenty-eight twenty-eight from the general fund to the road fund for work performed on the engineering truck asset two-eight-four-three-zero. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-six, order knowledge and receipt of the following card claims. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Orders seventy-seven, order authorizing the following inter-fund loans and repayments for the attached schedule. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-eight, order authorizing reimbursement to general fund in the amount of twenty-six sixty-one for repairs on fire services vehicle. Asset number two-oh-four-six-one payable from the fire service fund. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-nine, order approving payment of claims listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty, order approving request for assessment changes listed as recommended by Paula Lattner, tax assessor. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-one, author, order authorizing issuance of duplicate warrants as listed per certificates and affidavits filed with the Chancery Clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion? This one person has two, I've seen this name before. Do they just keep losing their check, or what?
Must be a...
What's the deal with this?
He said that they weren't mailed to his house and they, uh, purchasing or whatever, or, uh, office issues that verified that they weren't cashed, et cetera.
Let's check the void before we authorize issue.
Yeah, but we gotta pay for a stop payment.
Yeah.
It's twenty-five bucks, right? Last time I looked.
We stopped payment?
No.
You don't fuck with them?
We're not charged for any stop payment fees. People's back.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-two, approving cancellation, order approving cancellation of contract with Delta Computer Systems for instrument indexing software and authorizing county administrators send notice of cancellation. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I have a question. We're not canceling everything, right? Just that specific part? Okay.
What part is it?
It's the Chancery Clerk's software imaging. Indexing. My redemption. Or recording. Please sit here if you wanna discuss it.
Yeah, why are we canceling part of it instead of, I don't get it.
It's the software that we use for recording our instruments. We're replacing it with a new software.
Is it gonna interact with the old one now? This is the problem we keep having.
Uh, yes, we have everything, everything that we collect through our, through the new system will port out to the other departments.
All right. Robbie in here, did he hear that?
You cool with that, Robbie?
Because I tell you, this isn't the first time this is happening.
It's good.
Every time y'all bring something up and you wanna change it, then we find out three or four months later that talk, they don't talk to each other.
This doesn't count.
So you need to make sure of that before we get all this trouble.
It's, it's actually the same software. The new software is actually in counties that were utilizing Delta's recording system.
We just need to make sure it talks to Harrison County.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I've had, I mean, this is the first time it's been about the fourth.
My computer wouldn't talk to me this morning, didn't like it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-three, order knowledge and receipt of monthly reports showing expenditures and liabilities incurred against each separate budget item or receipts of property taxes and other revenues for the month of May submitted by John McCaddams. Do we have a motion? And there's nothing attached to this.
That's the one I told you is gonna be moved to the fourth.
Okay, so we need a motion to table this thing.
Motion to table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, I just saw it. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-four, order acknowledging receipt of region thirteen, says twelve, but I thought it was thirteen.
It is twelve.
It is twelve?
The older one, old one. I felt it is twelve.
Oh, okay. Mine Belt Mental Healthcare Resources, Department of Harrison County, into the Pine Belt Mental Health. Catchment area improving adjoining into said catchment for provision of community mental health services. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second, second. Discussion, why are we just not doing this?
It's a catchment. But never a catchment.
Accepted as...
We had a request to join by the county, and they accepted our request.
That was in February.
Then, then somebody said, well, we need an order accepted. Trish and I basically said, I don't think that's necessary. The person asking kept insisting. I said, well, it won't hurt anything. Complete the circle.
Okay, we can come up with it.
He was asking. He'd ask. Yeah, I'm late and I have a public meeting. Let's see who it is.
Mr. McAdams, I, he's, he pays attention. He's probably right.
Any further discussion?
It won't hurt anything.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-five, order acknowledging receipt of proclamation by Governor Tate Lee declaring Sunday, July fourth the holiday and authorizing the closing of offices on Monday, July fifth. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We've already discussed item eighty-six and eighty-seven. We'll go to item eighty-eight. Resolution of the Board Supervising Harrison County declaring the necessity for sale of issuance of taxable note series twenty-twenty-one of the county in a principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars as amended and supplemented from time to time for the purpose of providing financing for the cost and curating connection with Hurricane Zeta, including but not limited to debris removal, damage caused to, caused to culverts, and damage caused to public building. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, I need some more discussion, I'm sorry, y'all. Why are we doing this?
This is the, we had previously...
Ten million bucks?
Yeah, it's a loan.
Up to.
It's a loan on to pay our debris.
Oh, is it? Of not to exceed. Can hopes a female pays back? Got you. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Still, I do have a question. I noticed it didn't look, how about peers? What if we get into the issue where we have to pay?
It says in other structures.
I guess that includes the peers.
An upgraded blowdown.
Yeah, I was thinking, my head was on the other.
He's like fishing peers.
Fishing peers. Talking about pounds?
They're talking about...
Fishing peers, and I'm thinking peers, the...
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about fishing peers.
We know where your head is.
That that one would include, would be, be useful.
Did we vote?
Y'all didn't, no.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-nine, order approving request of Co-Selective Power Association to use war market ball fields as a material station area for the twenty-twenty-one hurricane season. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item ninety, order adjudicating and approving the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Convention Centers use of county equipment. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item ninety-one, order approving the waiver of rental fee for the use of Diablo Civic Center by cruising the coast to host its annual packing party on September, I think it's just one day, but it says twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item ninety-two, order approving the adoption of an ordinance by the Harrison County Board Supervisors banning the discharge of firearms in certain specific areas of Harrison County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion, Ken. That's like a first reading.
That's what I was wondering.
We've already had a first reading.
Oh, when?
We didn't, we don't need a first reading.
We didn't have one.
I think we adopted it last time as an emergency ordinance.
It was? I know, we talked about it, and I don't think we ever adopted anything.
Did you?
I don't remember. Did we do, we did adopt it?
No, we didn't.
We did adopt, okay.
No. No. And, and the premise was to adopt this under your emergency powers due to the health, safety, and welfare of the people.
So we don't have to go through.
Sheriff asked for that.
Oh, I realize, there's been a lot of.
No, but he asked for it to be done as an emergency because of the complaints they were receiving. It was a danger to people if she got with it.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item ninety-three, order adjudicating authorizing expenditures listed to advertise our funds and resources of Harrison County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Second, oh, discussion. Mr. Ladner, did you wanna?
Take B out.
Take B out, or?
Yeah, that, that generally, I do that.
That's the.
Open to the public, that's your fireworks this time.
Yes. So these will be items A, C, D, and E only. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now we'll do item B, five thousand dollars for Boom Boom Committee for Biloxi's Fourth of July fireworks to be held July fourth in the form of display banner, print, and radio advertisement. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Mr. Ladner, you got anything?
Knocked it out of my name.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I have, I want to advertise the county resources for the Mississippi Association of Comfite, having a conference here locally in the form of five hundred dollars to advertise the county resources.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion?
They gonna put up a sign or something, advertise it for the record.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. I do have an executive session item concerning, uh, planning, but the gentleman's not here yet, so. Pam, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Tim?
I have one thing, I'm happy to report to the board that ZCD, or Z Marine, the, 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 those buds, those spring, does want to look at the escape park.
There's a few other people that want to look at it too, so.
Okay, that's fine, just wants to look at it tomorrow afternoon, twenty-three and four, is that okay? Show it to him.
Yeah.
I don't have a.
We're not gonna sell it to him while we're there, just show it to him.
No, but there's a driver marine place that actually emailed me about it, cause I thought it was that guy and it wasn't, so he has. Which is bizarre to me.
And who would show it to you or somebody else, or? I don't wanna go.
And then I need to set up this other group too, then, cause I, I don't know if they all wanna go together, but. Might not be good.
No, it'll be awkward.
All right, so your group go tomorrow, and then mine go the next day. Okay, Ms. Powers, did you have anything?
Boy, y'all went fast, I'm sorry, I needed a bar, but I was hurting, yeah, several things. So I need to read letter resignation for my tourism commissioner, Mrs. Shirley Dane.
Uh, you just make a motion to accept.
Okay, motion to accept resignation letter of Shirley Dane.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And I want to appoint Ann Stewart of Sat Swan Row to replace her.
Second.
For my district to appoint.
Ann Stewart, do you want to?
She knows everything about this county inside now, so. Oh, I know, she kept me on the phone for three hours last night telling me how the county's a college.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
And then another resignation, unfortunately, of Michael Gussay. We got the letter, but he was my planning commissioner. He's resigning.
So is that a motion to accept?
A motion to accept resignation of Michael Gussay, M-I-K-E-L-G-U-S-A.
Got it, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
And for my district to, um, planning commissioner, I'd like to appoint Claudia Keys.
Second.
Any discussion?[1587.29]